State school not speaker. And Colin, I don't see her. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice drawn.
For both of everybody. First item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. There was policy, those programs, are there any additions or subtraction? Okay, so it stands as it's on.
Only to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion by Gray, you have a second?
I'll second now.
Second by Andrew. Any discussion on the agenda? If you agree to the discussion, I'll favor approving the agenda, signify by saying the aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was both name. Agenda carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Will they address the board? You ready? Okay, we'll move on. We have some acknowledgements. So we have the school foundation. Want to thank you for all your hard work to help raise money for teachers and programs at our school. We have the technology staff, so the IT appreciation day was yesterday. And school board members, my fellow school board members, it's school board appreciation month, so appreciate that. Mr. Port, if you got anything to add?
Yeah, just wanted to thank our foundation, school foundation, for all their work and time and their effort. Technology staff for all their work to helping staff and students. And thank you to all the school board members for all your work that you do for ISD 548. We appreciate it.
We'll move on to presentations. We have a marketing presentation from Ms. Waters.
Good evening.
Evening.
Just gonna update you on what we've been doing with our marketing so far this year. I believe you have copies of it as well, but otherwise we'll have it up on the screen. So every year we start out with a new brand. Our brand this year is Pack of Opportunities for Success. And as you know, with brand, we're looking at colors, fonts, graphics. This is kind of our main graphic that we'll weave in throughout the year. And also kind of a district voice and some stories. That all kind of goes in with brand. So what we want to do is we want to highlight our strengths, our differentiators, how we are unique, how we are different from other districts. So this ad really is kind of what we're doing and highlighting a lot of what we're doing. So we have a lot of unique course offerings. We have free Viking preschool and free midday transportation. We have a respectful learning environment, rich diversity, and a high number of post-secondary credits. And so what you'll see throughout the year is that we're gonna keep this. This is really kind of our main ad. This is touching all of those areas. And so we're gonna use this in different ads. We're gonna have it on the website. We're gonna have it in our newsletter. And we're just gonna keep this theme going. The first thing we do once we get our brand set is we do a district flyer. So this flyer went out in June. You probably all got it in your homes. This one goes out to over 10,000 people that are in our district. So the really nice thing is even if they don't read it cover to cover, they see it. Oh, excuse me, not this one. This one, they will read cover to cover. Anyway, this goes out to 10,000 people every year. And so this is where we bring our new brand out. This is a district flyer. That's gonna tell all about everything from preschool to our graduates. Then throughout the year, we have various district ads that we do. So we have a lot of them that we do in the press. We have an ad package that we do throughout the year. They also have a publication, the Lakes and Lifestyle Magazine, that has a distribution of 6,000. And so that is one of the ads that we put in. This particular ad was from last year, but it still has a similar themes. Then the press also has a special summer section that distribution's about 2,500. And then total market coverage goes out to about 8,000 people. You'll also see then on our website and Facebook, we are keeping that same theme. So really everywhere you go, you should be able, everything should look the same. You should be getting the same messages, the same information. We're also working on an ad bar that can go in the program. So if you go to a sporting event, if you go to a concert, we'll just have an ad bar in there with our QR code so you can learn more about the district. And just another way that we kind of keep our message going. We have the back to school section that we do here at the Pelican Press. And so this one, we do a preschool ad. We do our regular district ad. We usually do looking for substitutes and then with our ECFE program. So these are the ads that we did in the back to school section. We also use this ad then in the Daily Journal. So the Daily Journal is this sports journal one. We do ads in the fall, the spring, and winter. That distribution is about 3,000 people. And they have articles about some of the other districts as well. The other publication that we've been doing is the Otter Tail Lakes County Magazine. This is distributed, this distribution is 30,000 people. And so this goes out in about 500 regional locations. So that's a good opportunity for us to have information about our district as well as our ad. Community connections. We have done numerous things with the senior assisted living. We've had different students. The choir's gone in and sang. SAD group has gone in and helped do craft. Homecoming last year, we gave out buttons. So just trying to do a lot of interaction with students and the residents there. The city pool this year, we did something kind of fun. We got packets of lotion, shampoo, and sunscreen and had little Viking stickers on them, just courtesy of Pelican Rapids Schools. Just another way that we can touch people out in the community. Some different events we have in Pelican Rapids, some in Fargo, just some of the district show, or excuse me, the Chamber of Commerce shows, things like that. So we'll have our pens at those events. We'll have our flyers, our most recent district newsletter. And then we're working with the Chamber and the City of Pelican Rapids. They're doing a movement just with ads and videos promoting our community as a great place to live, work, and go to school. Another thing that we're doing this year is we're going to have district folders available that can go to new families, businesses, realtors. And so basically, we'd have our district flyer. This is a QR code. Contact us with questions, request a school tour. This QR code goes to our ask@vikes.us email. And that, I get those emails so that we're acting forward to the appropriate person if we have inquiries in. There'll also be a welcome letter. And this is just highlighting the different aspects of our district. Again, from our preschool to our high school. And then we'll just put the most recent school newsletter in there. We are also continuing to market to ages zero to five. So right now, we're in the process of coming up with some new ideas. For probably the last eight years, we were sending out a book for each age group. But that's gotten pass prohibitive. So we're gonna try to come up with some other creative ideas but continue to market to those age groups.
Is this the first time that little Viking has been used?
No, we've used him for awhile.
Long time?
For preschool, just different ways.
It's cool.
Yeah, kind of fun. This is Jamie, came up with that. She's our graphics design expert, so, yeah. And then finally, looking ahead. A little more into fall, we are gonna have a redesign for our websites. We have a different website provider and we're required now to switch to one of their templates. So you'll see that probably in November. We'll make that change. The template that we've chosen looks really similar to what we have. And yet has some nice improvements as well. Ads we'll have through the Pelican Press, the home for the holidays. That's again, one of their special sections, that ad bundle that we get. In the winter, we'll go with another Daily Journal sports ad. We'll also send out a newsletter that usually goes out in February. And the newsletters go out to about 11,000 people in the area residence. Also, any other events that come along again with maybe assisted living or other Chamber of Commerce events, that type of thing. In the spring, we'll do another ad in the Daily Journal sports. Pelican Press will do that, Lakes and Lifestyle Magazine. We do congratulation graduates. And then in May, we'll do a newsletter where we highlight our summer programs. And then we also market our preschool and kindergarten programs. And then we just kind of start that cycle over again in June with our brand for the following year. Any questions?
Looks good.
Thanks.
Okay, should we move on to Mr. Nelson at the elementary?
I think I'll stand over here on the outside.
That's very good.
Perfect. Last May, we ended with a 435 enrollment. Right now, we are at 461. Giving a tour Saturday morning to another family, so we keep having families come, which is a good thing. BPK is at 41. The three-year-olds are at 29, and head start's at 32. So the preschool's down a little bit. But K through six enrollment is up quite a bit. So I want to thank the staff for a great open house night. We had the meet and greet. We did something different where we had pictures taken. And I think the link's already been sent to families where they can have the pictures already ordered. And we had Club Vikes did a cookout. People could get hot dogs, chips, waders, snow cones. And then the staff were, oh, they're welcoming their new students to the room. And had a lot of positive feedbacks from families. They really enjoyed the pictures that day rather than, you know, once they're in school and the syrups on their shirt and the spaghetti sauces on their shirt and chin and everything else. So a lot of good feedback from parents on that. I want to thank Terriff Simmons and Megan King. And I can say that the preschool camp for preschoolers that are going into kindergarten, kind of just get them back in the swing of school, a couple hours a day, but it got those students ready to get back in school mode. So thank them for their work with that. And then Craig Archimbo, who worked as a para for us, got a job at a neighboring district, the same position. But we're thanking him for his work, but we're gonna hire Rebecca Hooper to take the spot as a professional. And then bus safety was completed the first week. All the students went through the protocols on the bus, how to evacuate a bus. And also the walking around the bus, the sidewalk safety, everything like that. And our first fire drill was completed yesterday. We are required to do five fire drills a year. Usually we get those in, sometimes with the help of the cooks who accidentally may not set the fire alarm up. So we try to get those in right away in the fall while the weather is nice, so. Any questions, anything? Are those years off to a very good start? So far, very smooth, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. John Chesky, high school?
Enrollment for us, we are at 375. Last year, at the end of the year, we were at 373. So we are up a couple of students. First day of school looked a little bit different. We did our welcome back in the fine arts. Then we had students go to their advisors. Advisors is new for us this year. They will meet periodically at mid-quarter and quarter with their advisors to go through different items that pertain to their grade levels. But this time, they got their schedules. Went through some handbook items and then also made sure that their laptops were ready to go in those advisor rooms. Read Act update. I actually was in a meeting today. We continue to kind of work through the plan and what it means for the high school. Our English department purchased new curriculum this year. They're working in their PLC to work on aligning standards and working through the Read Act requirements in terms of testing and identifying students that need additional testing. We'll use NWA MAP girls to measure progress and plan those interventions for students. This is homecoming week. It's a busy but fun week in the high school. I'm gonna leave some of those events to our students to talk about. But you'll see we have dress-up days every day. Yesterday was a rock, paper, scissors tournament that went around the school. Our seventh graders really seemed to enjoy that at lunchtime. Today was junior, senior games. I think the jury is out on who won. And then tomorrow, we do have a couple of home events, girls soccer and volleyball. And then Friday, our afterday will be the pet fest. We invite the elementary to come over and join us for a lap dance parade. And then we'll finish the day with coronation. Tailgate starts at 5:00. And our home game against Park Rapids is at 7:00. Upcoming, on Saturday, we have the Viking Gala. PLCs and BLTs coming up. And mid-quarter, believe it or not, it's just in a couple of weeks. Kind of crazy. Any questions?
Questions? No, I don't hear any. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope the coroner McLean would like to give us a report.
As Ms. Jay said, it's homecoming week, so the school is full of fun. Football team is currently 1-2, and their next game is at home on Friday against Park Rapids at 7:00. Volleyball team is 1-5. Their next match is tomorrow night at home, also against Park Rapids. Cross-country's next meet is the 25th at home versus multiple schools.
Soccer girls have been doing good this home season so far. Started off rough, but we're getting our group together. Student council, we have been doing a lot with coronation for my group, but we picked up the dress-up days and did all that too, setting up for behind the scenes. And the phone policy has been going good to a certain point, but a lot of complaints about teachers still having their phones are coming to me. So, other than that, I see a lot of kids trying their best to keep their phones in their lockers.
Anything else? Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Martinez is starting?
Treasurers' report for the month of August. Pretty busy month. Lots happening. Staff are back in the building. Students are starting to come back. Lots of activity happening. Also, state of Minnesota starts paying the school district, so that's always good to see. Again, we go in terms of our budget actual, just to see that we're on target month to month. So far, we've collected $1.5 million versus the $16 million that we projected in the morning. But that's now 9.3% of our operating budget. For expenditures, we're at 3.4% versus the $16 million that we have in our operating budget. And 8.68%, I was actually looking toward, looking at the history of a lot of them. And I think this is the first month that we're not playing catch-ups. I was like, oh, that's kind of cool. But other than that, we're always in accruals and we're always playing catch-up when it comes to the revenue piece based on our operating budget. So overall, pretty good. These numbers will change. And it will change as the new contract negotiations start reflecting. So those changes are, you're gonna start to see in the month of September. So month to month, it still reflects last year's last contracts, and so. Other than that, let's move on to the second page. Second page of is our cash flow statement, just giving us an idea of where we are in terms of cash on hand. We started our investment account with $5.3 million. We received just a little over $1.1 million of state aid, which is pretty good. That's the surplus that we see of additional revenue versus our expenditures. Of that, we withdrew $684,000 to cover our expenditures. Total cash or total investment on hand, just a little over $5.8 million. Last month, we started our operating cash in our checking account with a forecast that, again, this is not actual. This is the idea of it. I know I had some community members even ask, are we in the hole in our checking account? No. Remember that there's the timepiece in terms of when we print checks. In theory, our checking account would have been negative 55. But we issue the checks and there's a time gap between when people get the checks to when they actually cash them. So don't be scared of that. It says that our checking account is negative 55,000. This is a theoretical number. Deposits into our checking account, just a little over $1 million, of which were $600 reported from the investment account. Total bills that we paid this month were $562,000. Total payroll were just a little over $420,000. Total cash in our checking account, again, just a little over $6,000. Total cash that we have available at the end of August is $5.8 million. So again, pretty good month. Pretty good month in terms of our operating cash. The last pages, again, it's the entire bill, all the invoices that run through our checking account. And again, if anybody asks any questions or requires backup, you're more than free to let us know and then we'll provide that at your request. Any question before I move on to the next piece in our board agenda today? Okay, perfect. The second piece that we have in our board agenda, again, is our current cycle that we go into our levy. So today, we are asking the school board to approve the levy for the maximum amount. We start that process again every September where we start to levy. And again, the levy process covers everything from our operating budget to our debt service. And it collects those taxes from our constituents, from the entire footprint of our district, and it makes up for quite a bit. It touches the majority of our funds. It touches our general fund. It touches our community service, and it touches our debt service fund. So today, all we're asking the board is just to approve the maximum. Why the maximum? Because between now and December, there's a lot of fluctuation and there's a lot of changes. So the first initial reports that we get from MDE have a lot of errors. And as business managers, we go through about 3,000 different equations to point out where those errors are. And then we work with the state to make those fixes and then make those changes. Next Wednesday, we have an administrators meeting at Lakes Country Service Co-op where Kathy Erickson, the finance director for MDE, will be there to walk all of the member districts through the new legislative pieces that are impacting levy. So as you guys know, in the spring, when the new legislative pieces were enacted, some of the sliding equations for tier one and tier two of the levy were changed. Some were in our favor and some were not. So that's where we are working with the state to understand why some adjustments are negative and why some adjustments are positive. For the most part, there's gonna be a little change. But I will give more information as time progresses and I understand more of those equalizing factors that change in the computation of the levy. And hopefully Kathy can answer all of our questions. Big piece also in our levy is enrollment, right? So they take last year's ending enrollment and they put it into all the equations. So my job is to work with the state and to say, that number that you received in June is outdated. Here is our new numbers. And then we go through that adjustment piece, right? So between now and December, everything changes. Big, big date for school district is the first week in October. First week in October, we send the state all of our student data, all of our initial student data, and they plug it into their systems and they rerun all the calculations again. So this is why between now and December, we just say approve the maximum because we work with the state, because everything will change. In December, when we go through the truth and taxation meeting, is when we set the actual number that we're levying against our district. Okay? Any questions regarding the levy that we have approved today at the maximum? Okay, well, thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Okay, Port?
Okay, a few things with fall workshop recap. Just reminder that we had new staff workshop. The week before, we had district workshop. One of the biggest things with new staff workshop is our mentor, mentees get together and we go through the outline with them of what the whole year will look like. So all our new staff have a mentor, which is good. Give them off to a good start and help them get through the first year. Our Hunter Pinky was our speaker here this fall. Did a great job. He's gonna come back October 8th. He is going to present at the high school. And he's gonna present at that elementary school. Mental health training, Monica Schneider presented to our district staff. And we are looking at ways that we can incorporate her throughout the school year with our staff. We had school law training, which is a good refresher of law items related to education. And we want to thank Minnesota National Bank for providing lunch for all our staff. Appreciate them doing that. We have peer professional training in the afternoon. We had OT training and CPI training. And then principals mentioned that they had open house. Open house was at both schools. Great opportunity for parents to connect with staff. So great opportunities. And then on that first day, we had staff breakfast, staff lunch, staff picnic. Great opportunities for our staff to connect with each other. So they all took advantage of that opportunity. It was a good way for them to connect with others from high school to elementary, elementary to high school. So it was for K-12. Students enrollment. If you look at enrollment right now, both principals talked about it at their buildings. If you look at K-12 enrollment, we're up 28 students if you compare where we're at right now compared to last May. If you look, if you add our preschool, Head Start program and early childhood programming up to 12th grade, we're up 23 students. So if you look at our early childhood to 12th grade. So it's good news, we're positive. That's what we want. So Mrs. Hunter presented about marketing. Those are great opportunities for us to connect with people in our district and surroundings. So appreciate all their work, all the people with marketing. We also appreciate our staff and our community members talking to families about our schools and sharing the good news. Community engagement, a few things. We talked about the open house. One, we got homecoming week activities going on. This week, you got coronation on Friday afternoon. Friday night, we'll be recognizing the homecoming court at halftime of the football game. And then we'll also recognize the teacher honor roll and the members inducted to the Hall of Fame on Saturday, which will be at the Viking Gala. That'll be on Saturday. That's at the lower level of the VFW. And doors open at 5:00 PM. So if you want tickets, JustPay, contact JustPay if anybody wants to get tickets for that. And then they'll have the presentation at 7:30. And then from 8:30 to 10:30 will be games. So all the money proceeds go right back to our classrooms, our teachers, which impact kids. So I want to say thank you to all the Viking Gala team that puts us together at the VFW. We appreciate all their time and their effort on making this a great place to teach and learn. So raising funds. Special ed co-op update. I don't really have a whole lot. There wasn't much at the last meeting. There was a resignation of a staff member. And then we approved an agreement with Lake Agassiz special ed co-op for a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher at an hourly rate. So there's some needs there. So those were the couple items on the agenda. So it wasn't really a long meeting, nothing big there. So school board agenda items tonight. One is approve the hire of Taylor Baron for junior high volleyball coach. That's one, under consent items. And then accepting donations, which we do at every meeting. And then accepting donations, which we do at every meeting. And then approving the first and second readings of the policies. What the policy is listed is what we covered at the last policy committee meeting. And then just a reminder, October 1st, we'll have a finance committee meeting. That will be at 6:00 PM, right here in the district conference room. And then October 8th will be a work session. We will start at 5:30, and that will be with MSBA will lead us through that work session. So that work session will be about two hours long, is kind of give or take. So finance committee meeting will provide food, and at the work session, we'll provide food. So then October 20th will be the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. So we got a busy month of October, which will be good. Think that's about all I have? Questions?
I don't hear any.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to consent items. Item A, board meeting minutes. October, excuse me, August 20th, 2025, the regular school board meeting, and the August 28th, 2025, special school board meeting minutes. B, financial claims, August bills. C, treasures report. D, personnel. We have acknowledged resignation of Craig Arch M. Bo as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Approve the hire of Taylor Barrett as junior high volleyball coach at the high school. And approve the hire of Rebecca Hooper as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. So I retain motion for the consent items.
Make the motion.
Motion by Andrew. Second by Brenda. Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor approving the consent items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Consent items carry. Move on to business items. We have item A, approve the resolution accepting donations. So I think what I'll do is retain a motion and a second, and I'll read the resolution, and then I'll do that call. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Andrew. You have a second, Brenda? Okay. So we have a resolution, accepting donations. Every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by two-thirds of the majority of its members expressing such terms in full, therefore be resolved. The school board of Pelican Rapids Public Schools, ISD 548, gratefully accepts following donation as a by below. Bit more clemic, $100, student accounts. More clemic, another $100, Viking boutique. And a class of 72, $25, PRHS scholarship fund in memory of Renee Isag Solomon. Okay, so this is a resolution, so Andrew, how do you get a resolve?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes, Molly?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Next item up will be to approve the truth and taxation. Public meeting date of December 15th, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to approve the truth and taxation public meeting for December 15th of 2025 at 6:00 PM.
The motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I agree. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. So C. All being one school, or do we have to do each one?
That's what we've done in the past.
Okay. C will be approve the first and second reading of the following policies. Policy 503, student attendance. Policy 506, student discipline. Policy 507, corporal punishment and prone restraint. Policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students. Policy 512, school-sponsored student publication and activities. Policy 514, bullying prohibition policy. Policy 603, curriculum development. Policy 606.5, library materials. Policy 613, graduation requirements. Policy 620, credit for learning. Policy 624, online instructions. Policy 722, public data requests in form. Policy 06, crisis management in form. So who would like to make that?
I'm going to approve the first and second readings of the policies just listed by Chairperson Carter and listed in the agenda approved by the board.
Motion by Greg, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion of policies? Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. First and second reading, motion carries. Item D, certified opposed tax levy for the tax year 2025 to 2026, set to maximum. So I don't feel left out, I will make that motion. Do we have a second?
I can second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Okay, we're done with the business items, so we'll review the upcoming meetings again. So October 1st, finance committee will be meeting at 6:00 PM. October 8th, we have that work session with MSBA, 5:30 PM. October 20th is our next regular meeting, 6:00 PM. And then November 17th, we have another regular meeting at 6:00 PM. And who would like to make a motion to it? Motion by Andrew. You have a second?
A second.
Okay. Second by Molly. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. We adjourned.